Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, November 12, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is John Blasco, our Sign Language Interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are to be introduced. You can find the link in the Business dropdown on the city's PittsburghPA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the Launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar, find the meeting for today's date, and click on the Agenda. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, November 12, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Prowse, President.
Here.
Seven Members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This morning, we have some very special guests to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They are guests of Councilwoman Gross. Would you join us, please? Counsel, want to say where they're from?
Absolutely.
Please, thank you.
Hi, we're so excited today to have the kids from, teachers from Pittsburgh Fulton, K through five, which is located in Highland Park. I just wanted to introduce Principal Arnold here and thank her for bringing everybody down.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
En français, s'il vous plaît.
Je adore l'alliance au capot des citats unis d'Amérique et à recouper que représentent une nation unie, se veut toi qu'est déjà invisible avec la liberté et la justice pour tous.
Then if I may, have you remain standing just for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. And Councilwoman, would you like to escort your guests out? Thank you, guys, very much for being here.
Good job. Good job, good job.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. Okay, thank you all very much. In accordance with our Home Move Charter, our first order of business this morning will be Mayor William Perduto's 2020 Budget Address. May I please have council members Burgess and Strasburger escort the mayor, please? Thank you. Thank you, council as well, the administration. It's nice to see everybody together. Mr. President, Members of Council, Mr. Controller, citizens of Pittsburgh, I am pleased to be here with you today to present the proposed operating and capital budgets for 2020 as I share our vision for our city in the coming year. As I prepare to enter my seventh year as mayor, I want to share some of the strategic investments that we've made in many of the improvements that we have been able to do together. Our budget investments reflect what has become the guiding force of our administration, our P4 principles: investing in our people, providing them the best place to live, doing our part to improve our planet, and maximizing our performance and spending. We have made great progress in restructuring government, improving the delivery of crucial services, and ensuring our financial stability. But there's always room for improvement, and Pittsburgh deserves the very best, and I'm happy to share some of the priorities going forward. Investment in our citizens is crucial. Today, we recognize that our people are our greatest capital. Opening doors of opportunity to all our residents has the ripple effect of raising our entire city. In partnership with Reverend Ricky Burgess, our 2019 Summer Jobs Program, Learn and Earn, found jobs for over 2,000 young children in Pittsburgh and the surrounding region. That's right, councilman, I don't forget who brought that idea to Pittsburgh. This was the largest number served to date. It is our goal to see this number increase each year until we have found meaningful and educational employment opportunities for every child in our city. These investments in our youth couples with continued investments in programs such as Snow Angels and City Cuts for our vulnerable, our veterans, and our elderly residents. Through our partnership with the Dolly Partner Imagination Library, we are providing the children of our city with the opportunity to receive a free book every month until their fifth birthday. This year, we have distributed over 11,000 books to some 2,400 children. Our goal in the coming year is to surpass 20,000 books delivered to our kids. Through our innovative Rec to Tech program, we're bridging the technology gap for Pittsburgh's youth, creating greater opportunity for growth and learning throughout our recreation centers. Since my last address, we have hired the city's first digital equity and inclusion coordinator, Max Dennison, to implement the program. Since the new hire, Rec to Tech has won a national grant in recognition of this work to help renovate the long-neglected Jefferson Recreation Center on the North Side to be the first completely STEM-capable center, and has launched a coding class and an artificial intelligence class in two other REC centers. We've seen the excitement for these programs firsthand. Just take a look at this Facebook post from a mother whose young son is just as excited about coding as football. This year, we created the Office of Equity and promoted Majestic Lane to serve as the city's first Chief Equity Officer. We are currently part of a Living Cities Accelerator on equitable contracting that will be producing new annual purchasing plans to allow MWBEs to plan ahead for engagement with the city. Additionally, we have joined with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, GARR, and are transforming the way each department approaches their daily delivery of services through a lens of equity. That lens has already had a transformative effect on how we operate. This budget proposal revamps the Equal Opportunity Review Commission under a new office, the Office of Business Diversity. In partnership with Councilman Lavelle, we will be coming to council with legislation to transform this office's operations in the next few weeks. Investments in our people do not just come from programs, but the third places, not where you work, not where you live, but where you come to play and enjoy life. For so many across our city and beyond, these are our parks, recreation centers, poles, and playgrounds. Pittsburgh's parks are one of our greatest third places. We face a $400 million backlog in underfunding of our neighborhood parks that we would never be able to address on our own. I want to thank the voters of Pittsburgh for supporting the Parks Referendum last week. Together, we will use this new funding to improve our parks, playgrounds, and recreation centers using new metrics that value equity, stormwater reduction, physical condition, and more. Investments in our planet. Advancing our city means we must increase our commitment to sustainability of our planet. We have seen countless climate changes, change issues plague our city. We spent much of 2019 battling severe landslides and flooding. In 2020, we must maintain our preparedness for those issues. Climate change remains the greatest threat of our lifetime, and these issues are not expected to subside or to slow down. This year, we saw Pittsburgh begin to meet those challenges head-on. We became the second city in the United States after New York to adopt the United Nations' Sustainable Development Goals. We intend to prove that these 17 goals can stimulate the economy while putting the needs of our planet and environment at the forefront. These principles also will be apparent in our fleet operations. 2020 will see the purchase of the first-ever hybrid police vehicles as we work to replace our aging fleet. Many of the vehicles we provide our employees for their day-to-day work have long outlived their useful lifespans. We will also continue to invest in electric vehicles for PLI and DOMI, reducing our fuel usage, an initiative championed by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger in last year's budget. We will also be installing new EV charging stations around the city that will be available for usage by both city employees and the general public. Throughout 2020, we will be advancing our goal of reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. These efforts will include facility improvements, lighting efficiency, and energy purchasing. This year, I will continue to push for our pension funds to divest from fossil fuel companies, for-profit prisons, and gun manufacturers. Our budget reflects our moral priorities, and these industries should not profit from our workforce's dollars. Investing in place. Something you have to get used to with the beard, those little drips come down sometimes when you drink. When it comes to caring for our place, we've showed continued commitment to our roads, bridges, and public safety facilities. Pittsburgh is playing catch-up on decades of disinvestment. The 2020 budget proposes a continued significant level of paving totaling over $16 million. This amount is nearly double the level seen in years prior. New regulations and advanced planning by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure will also ensure we are coordinating our utility work. Too often, we'd see a freshly paved road torn up by utilities for work, and these efforts will minimize this practice to ensure the city and its residents have a greater return on our paving projects. Our facilities will also see increased spending in the coming year. 2020 will see more than quadruple the investments in parks, recreation, and senior centers, and public safety facilities than when I took office. Over $10 million in public facility spending will provide our city's workforce with quality living and work conditions. In 2020 alone, we will spend three times the amount on public safety facilities than from 2011 through 2015 combined. Specifically, public safety will see continued progress on three major facility projects. In District Two, the former Thaddeus Stevens School next to Townsend Park will be converted into the Special Deployment Division. This project will not only provide the division much-needed additional space, it will breathe new life into a currently vacant school building in the heart of the West End. Across town in the East End, we are developing our new public safety training center. When finished, this state-of-the-art facility will allow Pittsburgh Police, Bureau of Fire, and Bureau of Emergency Medical Services to receive the best training possible. This site could also allow Pittsburgh to serve as the regional center of public safety, police, fire, and EMS training, creating greater equity and best practices across our area. Additionally, we are in the process of relocating Zone Five Station from its current home on Washington Boulevard back to its original home in the heart of East Liberty with direct access to the community that it serves. In the past year, we have seen incredible success at the Northview Heights Police Substation. There, officers embedded in this community are creating lasting relationships that have already been successful in deterring crime. One such officer was Calvin Hall. Officer Hall took the rare step of advocating for his placement at this then-experimental substation. His passion for making a difference in his community was potent and impacted so many of his fellow officers. Officer Hall lived by his daily motto, "Time for me to make a difference." Please join me in a brief moment of silence as we remember not only the man, but the ideals that he upheld. Thank you. I'm very pleased, let me try that again. I'm very pleased to announce that in the spirit of that success, we will launch three new substations with a dedicated team of officers in 2020. Homewood, Downtown, and the South Side will see the kind of targeted, community-oriented engagement that we know will be successful. Public Safety Staffing. These substations are made possible by the continued bolstering of public safety staffing numbers as a whole. In the Bureau of Police, for over a decade, we have intentionally not honored our commitment of reaching the full staffing approved by the budget. And after years of hovering just over 800, as of today, we stand at 985 officers and recruits in the Bureau of Police compared to 857 officers on the day that I took office. This budget anticipates three full recruit classes in 2020. These new recruits will, for the first time, be supported by much-needed technology upgrades. We're making multimillion-dollar investments in new state-of-the-art body cameras. These tools not only increase the officer's safety, they reinforce levels of accountability and transparency. These steps build trust with members of the community they protect and serve. The Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire will continue to see a fully-staffed bureau. After years of intentional understaffing, we are committed to maintaining full staffing levels. The Bureau of Emergency Medical Services continues to see the payoff of the re-institution of the EMT program. Not only does this program create more opportunity to create the next generation of public safety personnel, it reduces our reliance on suburban mutual aid calls. In one year, we have already seen a 50% reduction in mutual aid calls. Our capital budget. Across the city, we will see $108 million spread out on over 150 neighborhood projects in all nine council districts. This year's capital budget follows our previously approved plan to borrow $50 million in addition to pay-go funding in our continued record levels of grant dollars from outside partners. I want to highlight just a few of the projects we will advance this year by council district. In District One, we will see the long-awaited two-way traffic conversion of Allegheny Circle. This is not only the reconnecting of a neighborhood, it's the correction of the urban renewal failures of the past. And District Two has seen almost $1 million in restorative work done on Grand View Avenue. This area is not only a national attraction for tourists who visit our city, it's the lifeblood of so many local businesses in the community, and it has not seen a major investment in key infrastructure since the 1980s. The 2020 budget will see this investment double alongside our state and federal partners to protect this gem. In District Three, we'll see the long-needed investments in the historic Oliver Bath House. This investment in the city's only indoor pole joins the significant improvements recently made at the South Side Market House. Providing these amenities not only improves the quality of life for our seniors, it invests in the very character of this historic neighborhood. These types of investments support our goal of creating holistic wellness programs for our seniors. This year, the Department of Parks and Recreation saw the hiring of Lou Anne Haran as the city's first Assistant Director of Senior Programs in the Department of Parks and Rec, dedicated to creating more comprehensive, physical, emotional, and creative programming for our seniors. The history and uniqueness of these two special buildings and the new approach to wellness that our seniors will receive is a part of what makes the South Side such a special neighborhood. District Four will see work done to improve Broadway Avenue in Beachview, including the construction of a new plaza. The public investment made on this avenue this year has led to the opening of a new coffee shop, new restaurants, and a renewed high level of interest in private investment. Supporting small local businesses is critical to the growth of this community. Together with the Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation, we will soon celebrate the ribbon-cutting on a new business incubator space above the city's senior center. In District Five, we'll see the long-awaited reconstruction of the Shenley Parks Division, ensuring our public works crews can adequately provide much-needed services to our residents. The new Shenley Building and the new Division Four will be the first city buildings to reach net zero certification. This confirms our commitment to the net zero standards for all major renovation and new construction projects for city facilities. District Six will see the long-needed improvements made to the Robert E. Williams Building in the Hill District and the Jefferson Recreation Center in the North Side. These two buildings serve as the heart of the neighborhoods they serve by hosting recreation and educational opportunities, after-school programming, and community gathering spaces. These facilities, along with recreation centers across the city, will be at the center of our renewed focus on opportunities for young people, including mentorship, workforce development, and STEAM education. To lead that effort, Catherine Vargas has joined the administration as the city's first Assistant Director of Community Recreation, Youth, and Families in the Department of Parks and Rec, focused entirely on youth programming. District Seven will see significant investments in beloved Highland Park. This includes the restoration of the historic pedestrian tunnel, the complete rebuild of the popular super playground, and the restorative work by PWSA on the iconic Central Reservoir Walk. With the passing of the New Parks Initiative, we'll be able to deliver projects like these every year in the neighborhoods across our city. District Eight will see numerous intersections reconstructed as part of our commitment to Vision Zero. Traffic calming, infrastructure, pedestrian signal upgrades, ADA improvements, and public transit facility upgrades all work together to ensure our roads are safe for all modes of transportation. District Nine will see dramatic improvements to Chadwick Park. This long-neglected space was closed as a community recreation center in the mid-2000s. Since that time, it has seen better days. We are now taking the steps to provide proper amenities to children in this tight-knit community. This includes lighting for the football field and new basketball courts to support the sports programming at the park. Success on the field with quality conditions connects children with mentors in relationships that build success off the field. And finally, investment in performance. A large investment set to debut in 2020 will be the new home of many city services. After decades of disrepair, we'll be investing in a new home for the offices currently located at the John P. Robyn Civic Building on Ross Street. However, this new home is not just about space. It will become a one-stop shop for permits in Pittsburgh. For the past six years, we've been working to break down departmental silos. This new building will provide the physical space allowing for a more productive and efficient level of interdepartmental cooperation. We are streamlining the difficult process of doing business in the city to create a better return for not only our residents, but businesses looking to grow. Improving our performance means improving our working relationship with our municipal authorities. A new cooperation agreement with PWSA will create a more clear working relationship to better serve the people of Pittsburgh and provide a world-class water system for the future. PWSA will continue to replace all lead lines across the city and advance their plan for a transformed treatment and distribution system. We will also work together to look worldwide for the best practices that we can bring to Pittsburgh. Working with Councilman Anthony Coghill this year has seen a record level of cooperation among PWSA, the city, and community partners to address neighborhood flooding issues. In 2020, we will double down on these efforts to protect residents, business owners, and our infrastructure from the devastating impacts of the rainiest years on record. We have continued to see dramatic change in the options available for residents of our housing authority. These are some amazing facts I wanted to share from the ribbon-cutting on the second phase in Larimer. The first two phases of the Larimer Choice Neighborhood saw a 63% increase in early learning. 66% of high school graduates are moving on to college. A 17% decrease in poverty. In 76 households returning to Larimer. This work, this year's work, will begin on Phases Three and Four, as well as the development of the Larimer Green Park. We will also work with federal partners to look to expand the Choice Program to other neighborhoods. Additionally, we will move forward with creating the nation's largest urban farm in our hilltop communities. This year, the URA will move forward with new leadership team and a new strategic vision that will focus on neighborhood investment in 21st-century economic growth initiatives. The Catapult Program is helping to support local and minority-owned startups that will benefit from the revitalization of our East Liberty neighborhood. Just this past week, I celebrated the first anniversary of the gallery on Penn. We will expand this fantastic program to the Hill District and work to bring it citywide through continued partnership with the URA. I want to thank the URA Acting Director, Diamante Walker, for her leadership of the organization and her vision for this outstanding program. Additionally, we will work with the URA to reform citywide lot cleanups. I want to thank the URA Acting Director, Diamante Walker, for her leadership of the organization and her vision for this outstanding program. Additionally, we will work with the URA to reform citywide lot cleanups. By partnering with them to maintain city-owned lots, we will not only add efficiency but also support small business growth and a workforce development component for neighborhood residents. Additionally, through an effort led by Councilwoman Teresa Cale Smith, today I'm announcing a new Clean and Lean Team in the Department of Public Works to target privately-owned lots that are abandoned and have created blight in our neighborhoods. So far in 2019, the URA has been able to use the dollars allocated by city council and our government partners to invest more than $40 million in affordable housing initiatives through new rental construction improvements to existing rental units, homeowner renovation programs, and helping Pittsburghers buy their first home. The Department of Permits, Licensing, and Inspection has also seen massive improvements in performance. I'm very proud to say that the online services via One Stop PGH launched this year with usage numbers growing month over month. These additions help the city keep pace with increased development and provide better services to residents and business owners. After decades of disinvestments, we will spend the millions needed to upgrade core network and IT infrastructure. Over the past several years, we have increased our funding in our physical infrastructure. Now it's time to match this investment in our critical IT infrastructure. These improvements are necessary to create the backbone to support key initiatives like Rectitech, Wi-Fi in city facilities, Police Bureau cameras, snowplow tracking, fire station alerting, and so very much more. City finances. After a dramatic fall prior to the city's entrance into Act 47, we have been working to responsibly grow our workforce to meet today's challenges. From PLI to DOMA to DPW and Public Safety, we have more needs than ever before, and it's imperative we work to create a competitive, modern-day workforce. I am proud of the work that city employees do each and every day to make the city a great place to live, work, visit, and enjoy. Please join me in thanking all of them for their hard work throughout this year. The staffing levels change. The city continues to pursue cost mitigation strategies for health care and workers' compensation. We have slowed the rate of growth in health care costs by moving to a self-insured arrangement and increasing our employee wellness program, which also has mitigated cost increases for our employees. Through our commitment to workplace and employee safety, we have reduced the number of injuries, both those requiring medical attention and those that result in lost time. A city has a disproportionate share of its operating budget, paying off debt, will struggle to deliver core services and fund priority programs and initiatives. The good news is that by exercising the financial discipline lessons learned through our time in Act 47, we have turned the tide significantly, reducing our debt service costs. In 2014, almost 20% of the total general fund, one out of every $5 we spent, were dedicated to debt service. This year, that number will be down to 9.22%. We have cut our debt spending in half. However, we continue to face significant infrastructure needs and must deal with the uncertainty of CDBG funds, which allow for targeted investment in our neighborhoods, yet continue to be reduced by Washington. As we develop the city's needs for the next decade, we have adopted national best practices to ensure we balance the needs of the city with appropriate debt obligations. This year, S&amp;P raised the city's credit rating to AA-, the highest rating in living memory. This is a direct result of our commitment to those best practices. Though we have talked about legacy costs individually, it is important to see the overall financial impact of our efforts. As I've already mentioned, debt service payments are steady, and workers' compensation costs also remain stable. Without these improvements, we would not have been able to increase contributions to the city's pension fund. Implementing a comprehensive solution to our pension funding has and will continue to be a priority for my administration. In 2020, the city will have doubled its contributions to the pension system compared to the beginning of my administration, and we will contribute over $200 million above the minimum municipal obligation over the next five years. Even with these record investments, the city remains in a difficult position. Any major market shifts will undo the progress we have made. The only way we can keep the promises made to our retirees and our current workforce, which we must do, is by working collaboratively with our state legislators and unions on comprehensive pension reform. We must all work together to avoid the temptation of overspending, overborrowing, and reducing our rainy day fund. Returning to the failed policies of the past that led to layoffs, facility closures is not an option. If we work together as we reposition Pittsburgh for the future, we can balance strong financial investments with prudent financial decisions. I want to take a moment to thank the entire staff of the Office of Management and Budget under the leadership of our new director, Kevin Paulus, as well as the Finance Department staff under the leadership of Director Margaret Lanier, for their hard work not only putting this budget together, but for their work year-round to keep the city's finances stable for the future. One PGH. We've spoken a lot this morning about the year ahead, but I want to take a moment to look into the future. We cannot continue to look to Harrisburg and Washington, DC, and expect to find solutions to challenges such as universal pre-K, affordable housing, climate change, infrastructure, new urban mobility, and more. The only real solution to these challenges is by doubling down on the Pittsburgh model, one that is based on partnerships. We must join with organized labor, our foundations, our universities, and our hospitals in the business community to solve the challenges of the next 12 years. One PGH will provide the outcome-driven plan that will strengthen a city for all. We will be announcing details of the first phase of this transformative initiative in the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to address council.
Council will take a very brief recess so that we may clear the room, everyone can return to their departments, and then council will return to conduct our regularly scheduled Tuesday business. So may I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome back. Our first order of business will be proclamations. We have Councilman Lavelle to present one.
Just as they come forward before I read the actual proclamation, I just want to personally thank you all for the work that you all do with our youth. They service, I would say approximately 200 or so youth every single year within their Hill District Football League Association, and this year, they, in every single level, went undefeated, which, to the best of our knowledge, is the first time that's ever actually occurred in the city. So we just wanted to take a moment to thank them. Whereas, the Hill District Rebels Football Organization is comprised of five teams: the Baby Twerps, the Twerps, the Termites, the Mighty Mites, and the Midgets. And whereas, currently, each team registers 25 to 30 kids per team between the ages of five to 13 years, providing activity, team building, character building, and establishing pride in the community for the kids of the Greater Hill District. Whereas, it has not been ever documented in the city of Pittsburgh that any Midget League football team has ever gone undefeated by each of its teams, and now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize President Tawwan Bray, the coaches of each of the teams, and most importantly, the players of the 2019 Hill District Rebels Football Organization, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim Friday, November 15th, as Hill District Rebels' Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you, Councilmen. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting. Takes us into public comment. Anyone here this morning wishing to speak before city council, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for a public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you will have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. I would like to take this opportunity, though, to remind everyone here that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We will not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. May we have our first speaker, please? May we have our first speaker, please? Dr. Miller, good morning.
I'm Wadakushi Wa. Etidessu, Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Oakland, Pittsburgh City and Oakland City, California, American Physical Society. I'm Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencessociety.org. We need more fermi than Fellini, and we heard a lot of that this morning, as far as I'm concerned. After Mr. Peduto's Galantio Opera Bufa, budgeting $100,000-plus for himself, what is he writing? An I novel? The Nihonjin, the Japanese, invented the selfie novel in the early 1900s. Self-promotion is part of the picture, right? The Democratic Party, in my view, sycophants who are here, cheered. They stood up. They clapped. But I think that queer. There is no evidence in the presentation by this mayor of multi, let alone 20-dimensional disciplinary intelligence. A concern of this council is with the budget, as is true for US cities across the United States. Pittsburgh City Government 2020 will budget how much? I want to know specifically, taxpayer money for a Hawaii 5-0-type secret unit out of that office, out of the office of mayor to police dangerous citizens? Now, Mr. Peduto will say, "I love you," you know, that he's the mayor of love. Well, is he going to tell us? My answer to that is that it's very unlikely. How much? How much for a Hawaii-style Magnum PI out of the office of council to pursue difficult citizens condemning council in public comment? Will Mr., quote, being consular, "is my calling? What are you, Mr. Kraus, now, a reverend? Do you have a congregation? Are you going to tell us your congregants how much you spend on this type of investigation of citizens? How much for Pittsburgh Police Officer raises and officer hires?" Mr. Peduto says nothing about the contract dispute. I have argued for almost five years that there should be at least $5 million set aside for new hires and for increases in salaries for Pittsburgh Police, without any question whatsoever, without any argument about divestiture or anything else. How much for changes in bus routes? But the city is not in control of the Port Authority. How much for bodyguards for our teachers in the Pittsburgh Public Schools? But the council, the office of mayor, is not in charge of, has no control over the Pittsburgh Public Schools. This is junk government.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay. Good morning, Les. Welcome.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live in Squirrel Hill. And you'll say, "What the hell is a guy 87-years-old doing coming out in this weather to talk to you? And I didn't realize that it was the mayor's budget report." We're at a very critical time in this country, one in which we have to come up with new thinking that we're willing to subscribe to. But I would like to take you on a trip, a mental trip, back in time to a little bit before 1960, before I came here. I proposed and actually was called to Washington, DC by the Department of Education to discuss my thinking on a little matter called free college education. Jeez, where did we hear of that before? My God. All those years ago. And what was my suggestion at that time was that we needed money, and how could we get it the easiest possible way? And so I proposed a three-cent charge for any check, whether you paid your electric bill or any bill, with a paper check. And it was before the day of plastic. And I went to not one meeting, but three or four at my own expense because I was duty-bound with three young children to try and bring about change. Look at what has happened in the interim. Children getting out of college with $100,000 debt. Major portions of our population, regardless of color, that are not getting the free opportunity of this great country. Now, do we have to go ahead and reinvent the wheel, or can we pick up that little idea and make it live today? The mayor wants to do all those lovely programs on the sign. I didn't expect to see them. There's enough money in three cents for all across the board to do all of them and have money left over. I thank you.
Thanks, Les. Thanks for being here this morning. Good morning, sir. Welcome.
My name is Paul Harris. I'm from the Hill District. I want to let you know that... Let me read right here. Is everyone here all in one accord? Do everybody here believe in God? Because that's what the Constitution and the Pleasure of Allegiance says, "Under God." So I want to know, do everybody here believe in God? If you don't, it's all right. You don't have to. Are we all in one accord? No one answers?
We do not engage in public comments, sir. Please proceed.
Yes, I do. I would. Well, I just want to know. So I know when you see my face on the throne, you'll remember me. I look just like my father, David, King David, in heaven. that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to register comment this morning before City Council? Okay. Seeing no more speakers, we will close the public comment portion of the council meeting and go into presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Morning, Councilman.
Good morning. Mr. President.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-three, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand twenty. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-four, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand Twenty CDBG Program and the Two Thousand Twenty through Two Thousand Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-five, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the Two Thousand Twenty Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation thereof, and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-six, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth, the Procurement Code, and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the Two Thousand Twenty Fiscal Year. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the Two Thousand Twenty Fiscal Year. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-eight, Resolution Providing for the Leading of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments and Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and for any City Departments, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof for the Two Thousand Twenty Fiscal Year. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-three, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of Five Thousand Two Hundred Fifty-eight Dollars and Twenty Cent to the Levy Convention Centers for Cost incurred for Government Alliance on Race and Equity Training. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-four, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract Extension with B-two-G Now and Providing for the Payment thereof at a Cost Not to Exceed Fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-five, Resolution Appointing Individuals from the Department of Finance to Represent the City as Delegates to the Tax Collection Committee to be Established for the Allegheny Central Tax Collection District pursuant to the Requirement of Act Thirty-two of two thousand eight. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-six, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Tax Chapter Two Forty-five Earned Income Tax Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D so as to fix the Rate of Interest on Delinquent Earned Income Tax for the Year Two Thousand Twenty. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-seven, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes Home Rule Tax Section Two Forty-six Oh Three Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D so as to fix the Rate of Interest on Delinquent Home Rule Tax for the Year Two Thousand Twenty. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-eight, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Nine Property Taxes Real Property Tax and Exemption Payment Options Discount and Delinquency Penalties so as to set the Payment Discount and Delinquent Dates for the Two Thousand Twenty Fiscal Year. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-nine, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Nine Property Taxes Real Property Tax and Exemption Levy and Rates on Lands and Buildings by Fixing the Rate of Taxation for Two Thousand Twenty. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Eighty, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter into Facilities Uses Agreements for the Purpose of Permitting Groups and Individuals to Rent City-Owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-Focused Activities during the Two Thousand Twenty Calendar of the Year. The City shall not charge more than ten thousand dollars per rental agreement. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Eighty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for Two Thousand Twenty pursuant to Chapter One Seventy of the City Code.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Burgess, do you wish to present a motion on Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-three?
That would be correct. Motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-three.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second on the motion, please?
Second.
Second, we have discussion on the request to waive the rules on Bill Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-three. And seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-three will be added to tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Eighty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Six-Eleven Authorizing in Agreement with Clean Net Systems of Pennsylvania, Inc. for the Purpose of Providing Custodial and Cleaning Services at City Parks, Recreation, and Healthy Active Living Centers by Increasing the Cost from nine hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-six, two hundred and twenty-two? I'm sorry. By Increasing the Cost from nine hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars to one million, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Sixty-nine, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven-Ninety-six Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand Fourteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand Fourteen CDBG Program and Approving the Two Thousand Fourteen through Two Thousand Nineteen Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Artist Image Resources by five thousand dollars and Increasing Historic Dochtown Development Corporation by five thousand dollars and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses Maintenance Purchase of Equipment and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven-Ninety-two by Reducing Northside Leadership Conference by four thousand eighty-five dollars, Increasing Public Safety AEDs by four thousand eighty-five, four thousand eighty-five dollars, and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses Maintenance Purchase of Equipment and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-one, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven-Ninety-nine by Making Various Amendments and Name Changes to City Council Line Items and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operation Administrative Expenses Maintenance Purchase of Equipment and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight-Sixty-three by Amending Various CDBG Program Line Items Adding J.D. Edwards' Financial Information and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operative Administrative Expenses Maintenance Purchase of Equipment and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents. Bill Number Two Thousand Two Hundred and Seventy-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight-Sixty-three by Amending Various CDBG Program Line Items Adding J.D. Edwards' Financial Information and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operative Administrative Expenses Maintenance Purchase of Equipment and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City.
Councilman, you're holding Twenty-Two, Eighty-three, Eighty-four, and Eighty-six?
Yes, I had one here to, um, that talked to me about these. So I want a Rule Eight on the last four.
You're not going to introduce those bills? Next, we have Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Excuse me. I rule eight on those four bills.
You wish to waive the rules, Councilwoman, on Bill Twenty-Two, Sixty-nine, Seventy, Seventy-one, and Seventy-two?
Correct.
Okay, there is a motion before us to waive the rules on these four bills introduced by Councilwoman Harris.
Second.
We have a second. Is there a discussion on the motion to waive the rules? Then seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Bills Twenty-Two, Sixty-nine, Seventy, Seventy-one, and Seventy-two will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee meeting. Councilwoman wishes not to introduce Twenty-Two, Eighty-three, Eighty-four, and Eighty-six. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Eighty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City into an Agreement with International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania Chapter for Trauma Life Support Training Services for the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at a Cost Not to Exceed six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Eighty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Corporation Agreement with Tree Pittsburgh for the Purpose of Supporting Tree Pittsburgh's Effort to Promote the Advancement of City of Pittsburgh Urban Forest Master, Forest Master Plan. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Eighty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Rights Title and Any, if Any, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Eighteenth Ward of the City, Council District Number Three Residential Rehab Housing Eight Hundred, Nine-Nineteen, and Nine Twenty-four Eureka Street. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Eighty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire All the City's Rights Title and Any Into the Publicly Owned Property in the Twelfth Ward, Council District Number Nine Institution Expansion at Sixty-five Thirteen Meadow Street. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an amended and restated Corporation and Support Agreement between the City and the Allegheny Regional Asset District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kail Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just a little note, unboarding Bill Twenty-Two, Ninety-one.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to Enter into an Agreement with CDR Maguire, Inc. for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in Connection with Various City Construction Projects, including the Central Business District Signals, South Side Signals, Liberty Avenue, Windsor Avenue, Carnahan Road Bridge Construction, Penn Avenue, Smithfield Street, West Ohio Street Bridge, McFerran Bridge, South Negley Bridge, Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge, Swinburne Bridge, Charles Anderson Bridge, utilizing previously appropriated funds in the Amount of five hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-nine cent, and newly appropriated funds in the Amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and sixty-six cent, for a Total Not to Exceed one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cent. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety-three, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Seven-O-eight, Finally Locating Rights of Ways and Accepting the Dedication of Roadways, which are Part of the Convention Center Roadway Improvement Phases One through Three, and Vacating a Portion of Tenth Street Adjacent to the David L. Lawrence Convention Center, No Longer Used for Roadway Purposes by Adding Additional Coordinates under Description Three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety-four, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Zones LLC Sole Source Reseller for the Annual Renewal of OTRS Gold Support in an Amount of ten thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-nine cent to Provide Commercial Support Consulting and Development Services for the OTRS Open Source Service used by IT Service Management, Customer Service, and Help Desk as Provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair has one communication from our Controller, Michael Lamb. I will need a motion to receive and file, please.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety-five, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting Fiscal Audit of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Innovation and Performance Verizon Franchise Trust Fund and Comcast Franchise Trust Fund dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then I do have one appointment to our Ethics Hearing Board, which will require... Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman. May I have a motion to receive and file?
Shall move.
Second, all in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Next, we have an appointment to the Ethics Hearing Board.
Bill Number Twenty-Two, Ninety-six, Resolution Appointing Jennifer Rich Nafke to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term of Three Years to Expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
This will require council confirmation. I have scheduled for interview for tomorrow morning at nine-thirty a.m. With that, we'll go to reports of committee for final action. We will begin with Councilman Burgess, who is our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Sixty, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November sixth, two thousand nineteen, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Twenty-six, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eight-Sixty-three, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand Nineteen Capital Budget, the Two Thousand Nineteen CDBG Program, and the Two Thousand Nineteen through Two Thousand Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Flood Control Projects by five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Increasing Bridge Upgrades by five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and Increasing Swinburne Bridge by twenty thousand dollars. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Twenty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Four-Thirty-two, which Authorize the City, the Mayor, and the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to Enter into a Professional Service Agreement with Rothman Gordon for Professional Legal Services Regarding Ethics Matter by Increasing the Total Cost from fifteen thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Thirty, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number Eight-Fifty-five by Transferring a Total of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cent from Closed and Completed Projects within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AEDs, nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. District One DPW Projects, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and American Legion Post Number Six-Eighty-One, twenty thousand dollars, and Allegheny West, ten thousand dollars. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Thirty-one, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Five-Forty-nine by Transferring thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cent from Closed and Completed Projects within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AEDs, nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. District One DPW Projects, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and American Legion Post Six-Eighty-One, twenty thousand dollars, and Allegheny West, ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. Is there further discussion on any of the bills as presented? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, nyes, nyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having then received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chair is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. Thank you, Councilman.
This is the last picture.
I lost a paper somewhere.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Twenty-Two, Sixty-one, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for November sixth, two thousand nineteen, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-Two, Thirty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the Sheriff of the County of Allegheny in an Amount Not to Exceed fifteen thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cent for Security Services Provided for the City at the Richard S. Caligari Great Race on September twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Safety Services Committee. Is there further discussion on the bill? And seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Urban Recreation. Our Chair is Councilman Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2262, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for November 6, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1977, Resolution Naming the Stratmore Street Park as Andrew Joseph Kukaruta Park.
Kukaruta.
Kukaruta Park. Bill Number 1994, Resolution Naming the Basketball Court Located at 555 Larimer Avenue as Costa Court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Urban Recreation. Is there further discussion on other of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. Council, I have scheduled a pre-agenda interview tomorrow morning, Wednesday, November 13, at 9:30 a.m., for the appointment of the Ethics Hearing Board that was introduced today. We're on a very strict timeline for that, and I apologize for how quickly we need to have that done. And then just a reminder that next week, on Tuesday, November 19, at noon, there will be an overview and policy discussion for the 2020 City Council Budget. Budget hearings will begin next Wednesday, the 20th, at 1:30 p.m. here in council chambers. If there's anything for members, Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, I didn't ask this under the question, because I was going to pay it anyhow. But my question is, why are we paying the sheriff's office in 2232?
Councilwoman, what committee is that under, please?
Dan Lavelle.
I'm sorry, forgive me.
Great Race.
Councilman Lavelle, can you walk us through that, please? For which bill?
2232, under our Public Safety Services Committee, the payment for the Great Race.
These are for services rendered.
For the city event.
Yeah.
My question is, why are we paying the sheriff's office? We're part of the county.
Same reason we paid them the last however many years I've been sitting here.
Okay. Then why are we paying them?
Because we have a standing agreement for them to provide public safety services.
Probably because our police officers have jurisdiction over the city first. In other places, they have a sheriff's office because there's places that don't have.
But before we get down to that-
No, I guess I have the problem because-
I don't think it's an either-or.
I don't see that happening in other parts of the county.
I just don't think it's an either-or situation. I think it's an and both. I think police are naturally included in the sheriff's office as a supplement, if you will.
And since we're part of the county, just like every other municipality, why aren't we paying?
All right, thank you. Further, anything?
I'd like to get an answer on that.
We'll do the best to get that to you, Councilwoman. Anything further then from members? Okay, with nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Shall move.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.